Four more seconds here. Right. Good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to call to order the regular Tiburon Town Council meeting for February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Madam clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Thier.
Here.
Councilmember Wellner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Here.
And Mayor Ryan.
Here. Thank you. At this point, I want to open the meeting up for public comments for any items that are not on tonight's agenda. And Madam Clerk, could you please instruct the public on how to participate in this manner?
Yes, if you would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you would like to make a comment. You can find the raised hand button on your Webinar Tools bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're using Zoom, I'll invite you, I will invite you to turn your camera and microphone on to address the council. Please accept the request from the Zoom host that you're being promoted to a panelist. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand, or you can submit an email to comments@townoftiburon.org.
Thanks, and also as a reminder, when you speak, if you could please state your name, and then remember you have three minutes for your comment. Do you see anyone in the queue, Lee?
Yes, it'll be Julie Jacobs, followed by Lorraine.
Great, thanks.
Thank you so much. This is Julie Jacobs. Hi, Jack.
Welcome.
Mayor Ryan. And I wanted to say I'm so delighted that the revised housing element has been submitted to HCD and wanted to ask whether there have been any submissions under the builder's remedy received. And also hoping that there was something I saw about having all emergency shelters downtown that that may have been revised to include other areas of town, that emergency shelters could be located in other spots such as where they used to be at Colchofar and at the church across Tiburon Boulevard from Colchofar. And the last question that I had was about. Oh, no, I'm sorry, it left me. Those are my two questions. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, and I'll get back to you some other, after the meeting, on the answers with those, we can talk later. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next is Lorraine.
Whoops.
There you go.
Sorry. I'm sorry about that.
That's all good, please, go ahead.
As you know, there is a town hall style meeting tomorrow in Belvidere to address the coyote problem here on the peninsula. And I would like to request that we have a town hall style meeting of our own to address the same problem whereby residents could come and speak to this, to this issue. So, yeah, if we could do that, that would be wonderful. Because there's a lot of activity and a lot of conversation going on right now in both communities about coyotes. So that's it, that's it for me.
Thank you very much for speaking, and as
Thank you.
Since it's not an item on the agenda, we can't contemplate the item, but we will follow up with you, so thank you for bringing that to us.
Okay, thank you.
Lee, do we see anybody else who wants to speak at this moment, in this section?
I'm seeing no additional comments.
Okay, thanks, so I'll close the open public comment period. And then this next section of our meeting is interviews for vacancies or potential vacancies on town boards and commissions. Do we have any of our candidates or applicants with us?
Yes, your first applicant, Dan Morgan, is here, bringing him in, monitor.
Hey, Mr. Morgan, welcome, how are you?
Nice, good, I'm good, thank you, Mayor, thank you all for listening to me.
Yeah, well, thank you for applying, we appreciate it, and I know that we all read your application, and at the risk of being repetitive, I'm wondering if you could just start us off by sort of giving us a summary of, you know, what you've done and where, how you come to be interested in these positions before us today.
Well, I, that's, I could go on for longer than you want. I started out my career as a real estate appraiser, and I transitioned into development and construction, and that's what I've been doing for the last forty years. And I've been on the my side of the table, and I'm interested in being on your side of the table. I'm winding down my, my development career, and I think I have a lot of experience from my side of the table that I could be a valuable asset to the public and to the towns and to the, to the, to the process. I've learned a lot about the process. I've entitled thousands of homes and built hundreds of homes and do some commercial work. I understand land use. I understand general plans and housing elements and zoning and land use. And I'd like the opportunity, opportunity to give back. I've been in Tiburon, I've moved to Tiburon several times. I've built several houses here in Tiburon, one being where I live on Benton Court, and I enjoy the processes, as strange as that might, might sound, but yeah, things, things are, things are
Being recorded, just so you're on tape now.
Okay. Anyway, that, that's, it's, it's an opportunity for me to give back and bring some of the experience that I've had from, from my career and help others.
Thanks, I appreciate that, and, and I did notice on your application, so you, you listed, I don't know if it forced you to rank order them, but there was the planning commission followed by the DRB, and is that, does that represent the ordering of your preference, or you just pick those two?
Um, well, I actually responded based on the planning commission vacancy. The planning commission vacancies of more interest to me, they're both of interest, a high degree of interest to me. The planning commission is more technical and legal, and I like that, I love design and, and I don't know if I'm as qualified as design because I have my own ideas.
Fair enough. Does anyone on the council have any questions for Mr. Morgan? Vice Mayor Fredericks, please, go ahead.
Yes, and, and thank you for applying, Mr. Morgan. I just wondered if you had stayed abreast of our update of our general plan.
I have been staying abreast of the housing element, I have not been abreast of the general plan.
So have you read any of our old general plans, or?
Yes, yes.
Yes, so is there anything that stands out with respect to land use, including housing, in our general plan that is unique or particularly an issue?
I don't have any preconceived issues, I don't have any any particular agenda, direction, I, I don't lean any particular way. I think I like, I love our community. I am not here to advocate any kind of change to it that is not supported by the public. I, I live here, so I want to make it a great, keep it a great place.
And of course, you wouldn't want make changes that weren't consistent with the general plan either, would you?
No, I, 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 again, I've been on that side of the table, and, and I understand that consistency and rules are are, are the norm, and deviation from them through variances, et cetera, is, is not something I would there has to be a very good reason, and there are good reasons generally.
Sometimes.
Sometimes. Good questions, by the way, thank you.
It's my pleasure.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Waller, please.
Okay. Hi there, Dan, thanks for tossing your hat in the ring. I just have a, a quick question based on something you said about winding down your development career. Do you still have development projects? And if so, would there be any in Tiburon, or is the prospect of a conflict not on the horizon?
There's, there's no, most of my work is in Sonoma County, and I have some commercial property in Sausalito, but I have, I, I'm in, I'm in the tract business, so
I see.
Or production type building, and, and that's what I'm winding down. I don't have anything, nothing on the horizon.
Nothing pending in, or in the foreseeable future in Tiburon.
Nothing even in my brain.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thier, please, go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much for applying, Dan. I just had a question of, is there anything in particular you'd want to do on either of the boards? If selected?
In terms of agenda or, or role?
Oh, either, either.
No, I, I don't really have a, I don't have an agenda, it's, it's, my interest is more, I know the process, and I, I'd love to participate in the process from the other side. I think I could be a good asset and well-balanced, I think, you know, my only hesitation on design review is, I like what I like, and, and I don't know that I, I, I'm sure I could bury my prejudice in my own taste, but that just seems like a potential I don't know, conflict or, conflict's not the right word, it seems like a potential I mean, it might be something I may not be good at, I don't know.
I don't know that anybody comes into, isn't, is there bias for you, but you know, you have a board that comprises the the aggregate opinion, so it's not necessarily a bad thing, but I appreciate the answer. Any other questions for us before? Let you go?
Uh, no, no, I, I just let you, let you know that I'd be happy and willing to serve, and if I understand that I've been here a long time, and I never, I never applied for these positions because it would, I considered it a waste of time. And things are changing now, and again, coming at it with the, with the opportunity to give back is, is my goal, and appreciate you listening to me.
Thanks, really appreciate you applying and coming in and talking to us.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Your next applicant is Daniel Fletcher, he's here, I'm bringing him in now.
Hello, I think I'm unmuted.
You're all good, yeah, good evening, Mr. Fletcher, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor Ryan and Councilmember Wellner, here and Fredericks, good to meet you all on, on the Zoom here.
Yeah, so thank you very much for applying, and we did review your application, but we'd love it if you could just sort of give us a summary of, of how you came to this point and how you want to be involved.
Certainly, so, on, on the one hand, I'll keep it simple, and my name is also Dan, so you won't be confused there, hopefully. But I will make it slightly more complex in that my background is certainly different than, than the first Dan tonight, so while he's a developer and, you know, has been in around property and housing his entire career, I am, am a financial and strategic professional, so I have a fifteen-year career and have spent the last six of those years as a CFO, Chief Financial Officer in, in the tech industry across two different businesses. My career, though, spans all the way back to the start as a CPA for PricewaterhouseCoopers, and spent a number of years as an investor following that, and finally settled on my passion for, for running companies.
And I noticed on the application as well that you sort of indicated four different areas of interest with respect to commissions and boards. Is, do you have stronger preferences for one versus the other, or?
Certainly, so that could seem a bit of a spray and pray approach, I, I think I'll simplify it for you. So my, my true interest here just aligns with where I think I can be most useful, and that, that's on the planning commission, and I'm happy to, to parse why I think I could be more, most useful there. But it also is balancing just my general interest to help, I think I made it, you know, tried to make it clear on my application that my family and I put down roots here, my wife Bridgette and two small daughters, and I want to make sure that, you know, I give back to this community and, and that all the wonderful things about it, I have a chance to, to contribute to, uh, keeping them wonderful, if that makes sense.
Of course, yeah, thanks. And this is probably a good time then, since you indicated planning commission, for me to ask Vice Mayor Fredericks if she wants to ask the same question that she asked the previous Dan, because I thought that was really
Sure, I will.
Thanks.
Have you been involved in the update of the general plan? At all?
So, involved as a spectator, right, so I am a ARC, proud ARC subscriber, and, and, you know, have now for months followed the, I don't know, the, the challenger, the struggle of complying with RENA and collaboration with A-BAG and, and submitting to HCD, so I've been a bit of a wonk on all of that, and, and consider myself conversant, you know, nowhere near the level of, of this town council, but enough to, as the, the folks in my industry might say, be dangerous.
We're all pretty dangerous, but on the subject, have you read any of the documents that were considered during the public meetings on the general plan?
So some of them, primarily I educate myself through the ARC and then going to the state websites and, and trying to understand just what the heck is happening between Sacramento and the broader town-level communities, but you know, I understand that we have an eight-year period to, to create six hundred thirty-nine homes of different types, and I understand, you know, the areas that have been targeted and, and I understand what's going on with Paradise Drive and that development, and SB nine and ADUs, and all the good stuff that you all have had to, to deal with over the, over the past year.
So, so have you developed some lists of priority issues that you would like to address as a planning commissioner?
Well, I, I view the, you know, this, the, the planning commissioners may agree or disagree with me, but I view the job of that committee to help this council be, A, in compliance with, with Sacramento and, and the mandates handed down, but do that, B, while, you know, acting in the interest of, of our community members and our neighbors, and that's a very difficult needle to thread, I think. And I think the planning commission, you know, being quick, being thoughtful, taking community feedback, and getting you all what you need to make, for example, your housing element submission recently is, is what I want to help with, and, you know, for example, I think the tremendous effort to very quickly get odds in place to help sort of combat, or not combat, but cope with the builder's remedy was pretty astonishingly quick, and, and I think the planning commission did a really good job in partnership with the design commission in, in getting that done in time.
And so there are other elements in the general plan. Are you conversant with what they address, and do you have any sense of, of anything you might have read that defines Tiburon in a different way from other communities you might have thought of?
So I, I would not consider myself deep on, on the general plan, I think I'm more deep on the housing element, you know, that's, I think, maybe where the planning commission, at, at least my perception of their efforts have been focused recently. With that said, you know, I understand the different zoning, you know, the, for example, the, the historic village zoning here and the three-story limits, and, and I think all of those things, including the historic designations and things like Measure M are, are all very important to Tiburon, and, and so it's got a, a unique balance here of historical importance and, and relevance and, and charm and sort of coastal village charm that is, is a challenge to preserve when, you know, you also have to balance that with the need to grow, to address housing shortages, and so those are the areas Councilmember Fredericks said I'm, I would consider myself more conversant than.
Thank you, Councilmember Thier, please, go ahead.
Yes, Daniel, thank you so much for your application. Could you talk a little bit about wha- what you would do on the planning commission and why you favor planning over design review board or the other commissions that you ranked in order?
Certainly, so I think right now the, the planning commission is a little bit under the gun, so to speak, if I'm, if I'm allowed to use that word on here. It, you know, we have this May thirty-first deadline, and, you know, I agree with what you know, Council, Councilmember Wellner said that we're a bit exposed, I think, and, you know, not just downtown was the quote, but everywhere in Tiburon, and, and I think that having, you know, strategic, high-energy, you know, willing members on the planning commission to help the town council deal with these challenges is important, not just in these next few months, but, but beyond. And so I think, look, the planning commission, you know, I think it's important that we take advantage of, of, you know, landowners who are, are willing to build. Paradise Drive comes to mind, and also to, I think, Councilmember Thier had ideas about, you know, leaning in on ADUs and just finding creative ways to, to make sure that, you know, if the state comes back, doesn't agree with the housing element, that we can get in agreement with them in, in time to make sure that this council, your council, controls, you know, the development here rather than it kind of being an open market.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions for Dan? And Dan, do you have anything that you want to ask us about?
No, no, appreciate what you guys do for, for Tiburon and keep it up.
And, and actually, one more question before you go, I mean, so I don't know if you're familiar with the way that the, the reappointment process is unfolding, and I'm, I should have said this to Mr. Morgan as well, so I hope he's still listening, but it is probably the case that the only potential vacancy on the planning commission will be one planning commissioner who's up for reappointment, and we traditionally reappoint incumbents, and you know, this one in particular is an incredibly great public servant and capable plan commissioner, so if it's the case that we don't have any vacancies, natural vacancies on the planning commission, would you like to be considered for one of the other commissions immediately, or do you want to come back and talk to us about it?
I would like to be considered, and that's all in the application, I think I spend more time on the planning commission, that's where the conversation went, but no, I, I mentioned my interest in preserving our open spaces within reason, and, and the design board preserving the character of our, our town, and so these are all things that I am willing to help with.
Great. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Yeah, thanks for being here. And just you, you can head out, but I want to say it to both candidates, again, thank you for applying, and, and I hope you understand where we are in the process and how, you know, the appointments have to be done March first, essentially, for any vacancies, which I don't even know that we know all of the vacancies we'll have. But we really appreciate you applying, coming, and both of you for being so prepared, that was, you are demonstrated an incredible mastery of a subject that you not even, that not necessarily is in second nature to you, so I appreciate both of you guys for, for coming before us tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. And I'm wondering if there's any member of the town council that wants to pull any item from the consent calendar. I will pull item, consent item three. And then is there any member of the public who'd like to pull an item or, or comment on an item on the consent calendar, either one of CC one or CC two?
Seeing none.
Thank you, so I'll close that public comment. Can we have a vote on the consent calendar items one and two, or a motion to?
Moved.
Okay, I got a second. Thank you, second, Vice Mayor, can we have a roll call vote on those two items?
Councilmember Thier.
Yes.
Councilmember Waller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes. Thank you very much, and so, you know, consent item three is a resolution in honor of Black History Month, and the reason I pulled it, I just wanted to make sure that every, that we all recognize that within the resolution, which in and of itself is important, but we give an acknowledgement to Noah Griffin, who was on the town council and recently resigned, and you know, it was, his victory about fifteen months ago was momentous, you know, he was the first black ever elected to town council, and so we really appreciate his service, and we want to acknowledge both the import of Black History Month and, you know, Noah's involvement in the town and how those two come together. So with that, can I have a?
I just wanted to say one more thing, too.
Absolutely.
I'm glad, I'm glad you pulled it, Mayor Ryan, because I was going to do the same, and I just wanted to make sure that we recognize Noah's service and what it means and meant for our community, and also the importance of acknowledging Black History Month, so with that, I'll move it.
A second dip.
Thank you, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Thier.
Yes.
Councilmember Waller.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes. Thank you, so that one passes four zero as well. And now we can move on to the action items. Starting us off tonight, action item one is to consider a request for a contribution towards the Thomas Jackson Public Art Installation and approval of a commensurate budget amendment in the contribution amount from the general fund. Do we have a staff report for this, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. First, I want to let councilmembers know that our plan was to have our, our Jane Gupta give this presentation, but unexpectedly something came up, he was not, he's not able to be with us this evening, so I'm going to give a very short presentation on this, and also the Chair of the Heritage Arts Commission, Jaleh Intamad, is also with us, and she would be available to answer any questions that the council may have. So just to refresh council's memory, back on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, council heard a presentation about a, a public art project called the Thomas Jackson Art Installation. And this project was sort of first envisioned by the Public Art Selection Panel, made its way through the Heritage and Arts Commission, which recommended it to council for approval, and of course, again, on October nineteenth, the council did approve that. The, the installation would be temporary and remain in place for about eight and a half weeks from May till July twenty twenty-three. And the installation itself is comprised of a number of colorful, lightweight pieces of fabric, sustainable fabric, each on its own five-foot pole, and the installation location is on the area we call South Knoll, near the playground, in that area, near South Knoll. Again, on October nineteenth, council enthusiastically supported this project. The estimated cost of the project is fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars. The Heritage Arts Commission and members of the Public Art Selection Panel are working hard to raise money in a number of different areas, which are detailed in the staff report, including a scheduled reception that'll occur at town hall on March first, which coincides with the council's first in-person meeting when we come back, so it'd be a lot of action at town hall on, on that evening. The, the presentation that was used on October nineteenth was included in the staff report as, as an exhibit, and the Heritage Arts Commission letter requesting a contribution in the amount of seven thousand dollars is also included as an exhibit in the staff report. With that, I would ask council if they have any questions, you'll see that Jaleh has joined us, welcome, Jaleh, and I'm also here to answer any questions. If council chooses to make a contribution in any amount, we would also ask them to approve a budget amendment in that amount to fund the, the contribution, and those funds would come from general fund operating reserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Intamad, or should we go for questions? But I want to ask the council if anybody has any questions for either staff or for Mr. Intamad. Okay, could I open it up for public comment, or is there anyone, a member of the public who'd like to speak on this agenda item?
Seeing none.
Okay, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. I actually have one question, sorry. Do you, do you know, does the Heritage Arts Commission or Committee foresee any future projects that we'll be looking to contribute to for the rest of the year? Or is that just too? Or is that just too far down the horizon? Over the horizon? You're, you're on mute.
Jaleh, you're muted.
There you go.
Okay. My name is Jali Etad and I'm Chair to Heritage and Arts Commission. Yes, we have been working on this project for many years, for about three years. And our past artist laureate, Richard Rosen, has finally, we've came to conclusion of having a policy for public art. We would, we really would love to have public art in our beautiful peninsula that we do not have right now, not many, one or two. So we have been working very hard to get this project on the road so that we can start with something else. And that is bringing public art again to, to our community. So we have really been working very hard. All of us. We have started this fundraising. The serious one is starting on March first. We'll be upstairs and you will be downstairs in your meeting, but you're always welcome to step upstairs. Six to eight is meet the artist. The artist is a very well-known artist. I'm sure that you have read our letter and looked at his work. It's really an amazing work. It will bring tons of people from all around this peninsula to see it. Because it will be so colorful and that part of the hill is so windy that it just starts moving these colors around that you can actually see from, from Sausalito, from far away, you can see from Sausalito, possibly from San Francisco, I'm not sure. But everybody is very excited about this. And you did unanimously love this and you were behind us. Now it is time to do it. A fundraising for it because unfortunately we don't have enough funds. We have tried to raise funds. For now, we have maybe close to half of the amount that we are asking. We need fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars and we have almost half of that.
That's great.
As you will hear in the staff report, the foundation Tiburon Peninsula Foundation has given five thousand dollars towards this. And we have been trying, there is a pin we have created by, it was designed and made by a very well-known artist in Los Angeles and it is called Start, S.T.R. S.T.A.R.T., Start Pins. So that is part of it too, but we are only selling it for twenty dollars per whoever wants to, to buy it. So it really doesn't give us much. So far, we have had only one big opportunity of selling these things in, in, in the holiday and during the start of the holidays in Tiburon activities. It was raining and to hustle people and people were really very willing to help for public art. So it is, we are very excited about it and we are hoping that you will consider helping us here.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any of my fellow council members have any comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Thera, please.
So I just wanted to say that I remember this presentation from October and I remember being very, very excited about it. I think it's a beautiful installation and I'm in favor of giving the money to support this art. I think public art is very important and this piece in particular, it's just so interesting and different. So I would love to make a motion at the appropriate time to support our Heritage Arts Commission and give the seven thousand.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments? They want, go ahead, Councilmember Warner, please. You're on mute, John.
Sorry about that. I just wanted to say thank you and how much we appreciate and feel very lucky to have a Heritage Arts Commission that's so thoughtful and active. And like this is going to be a delightful exhibit. I'm looking forward to it and I'm very supportive.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Fredericks, Vice Mayor Fredericks, please. Thanks.
Get out.
Yeah. And same. So I'll return to Councilmember Thera for the motion issues.
So moved.
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please, to support the contribution?
Yes.
Sorry, Councilmember Thera.
Still, yes.
Councilmember Warner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. You will really enjoy it. I promise you.
I'm excited to see it, for sure.
Thank you. Tell us how we can buy a pin. Yes, please. They're really cute. They're really pretty. Thank you.
And Greg, I'm at the risk of displaying my ignorance. Like, do we have a subcommittee if they come to us with a proposal for a more permanent policy towards contribution to the arts? That's sort of more automatic that they would talk to, or is everything just going to come to the full committee, to the full council?
There's no, no subcommittee of council that is dedicated to the, you know, that, that's affiliated with the Heritage Arts Commission.
Okay. Anyway, okay, thank you. So thank you very much. The second item we have for consideration, which is AI two, is the Main Street Closure. And in particular, we're considering a request to close Main Street on Saturday, April first, from two to six P M for the Persian Nowruz New Year Spring Festival. Can I have a staff report, please?
Just very briefly, you've all met Nushen before at the Diversity Task Force and I believe she's presented also at council prior. So Nushen is one of the applicants of a special event permit to hold an event celebrating the Persian New Year. And as part of that event, they are requesting a closure of Main Street. And as, as I've said many times, we always bring these to council for their approval. And you can see Nushen is on the screen and we also have, the clerk is prepared to share the screen with any of the material that was included in the packet, most specifically the map of Main Street, as well as the schedule of events. With that, I will turn it over to Nushen. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Hi, councilmembers, mayor. Good to see you again. Yes, I'm not going to repeat the presentation I did this fall, but basically there was a lot of consideration around the location and actual date. I had talked to a lot of local residents and we discovered Belair actually has two consecutive weekends in March for the school play. And a lot of the parents would like to attend this type of festival. So that's how the April first date came. And it wasn't too far from the actual start of spring and Persian New Year. So that's where that date came. And then it is not, I spoke with Deanna a couple of times from Chamber Commerce. She's been great. This event would not conflict with any chamber events. The Teddy Bear Tea happens to be earlier on the first at the library. So that was great. And she was really helpful with devising the map. And we would absolutely want to work well with the businesses. The music, type of music is actually string instrument. It could work well to like create an ambient music potentially for shoppers. I would not, there would not be any alcohol sales at this festival, very family oriented. And even the, in the map, we actually proposed food to be kind of closer to the Shark Mountain, though the food would be a little bit more on the light side, just sampling of Persian flavors. But even just having it like not directly in front of a restaurant, I think could be pretty helpful for the business and to be considerate. And yeah, so we're really looking forward to it. It really is inspired by the successful Diwali event, classical Persian musicians and modern DJ and as well as a dance troupe that I have gotten quotes from. So I think by March eighth, which is the diverse, the next diversity inclusion task force, I would have a very finalized budget that would not go over what Diwali had. And I think that's all I would have to say. I wanted to keep it succinct tonight. The welcoming remarks could actually encourage people to shop, you know, so I'm, I'm a townie, so in any way to be, you know, in cahoots with the business owners and everything. So I think that's it that I have for tonight. And then the map, I'm not going to screen share anything, but I think Lee emailed the map and there's a rough agenda that would pretty much follow that order. But if, let's say, the dancers want to break up music, however, it might change like by fifteen minutes here and there. So I think that's it. Thank you for your consideration and your time tonight. Any question?
Yeah, does anyone have any questions for Nushen or for staff? Greg, Councilmember Thera, please.
I do question. So in looking at the map, I noticed that the stage and music is, I think, is it located right now across the street from Sam's? Is that right?
I think Deanna had modeled it on where previous stages had been in the past. So, yes, it looks like it is. I don't know if that's where Friday Night in the Main actually had their stage typically. I don't know if there's a reason behind, if there's more out power around there.
Okay, that, that's usually, usually where it is.
Okay.
But there, there have been some complaints from businesses
Yeah.
and requests to move it over by Fountain Plaza.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know if that's something you want to think.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, so Diwali did not have a stage because I think they used a drummer. But since this is stringed instrument, acoustically, I think they thought a stage would be better. And I don't, I don't know if it needs to be like the same style or size of a stage that like a full band would need. I think if it just, there definitely needs to be some elevation for stringed instruments.
Okay.
So, yes, but I think, yeah, I was just, she modeled it on previous events. So I think that's right.
Thank you.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Fredericks, yeah, please.
Yeah, just to comment, I appreciate that you are sensitive to the needs of the merchants. And this is a clarification of the map. If Deanna said the stage is where the stage usually is, it's usually across from Water's Edge.
Okay, the waterfront spot that.
The Water's Edge is the hotel.
Yeah. So I think, well, I think the hotel for some reason does, oh, I see. Yeah. So you do see Water's Edge, but it's kind of at the bottom.
And, and the fact that, that your stage, I, I am getting the sense that it is not as loudly amplified because it's string instruments. It's a different experience.
It's a different experience. They're sort of on the softer side and even the dance troupe was concerned. Well, would that be interesting enough if there's a lot of families and younger people? Would it be better to have like a short performance than a little bit of dance, like break it up a little bit? So it's not just string instrument for twenty to thirty minutes and then dance, but actually like break it a little bit. So it keeps people engaged.
Thank you, Nushen.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, so could I open it up to the public, please? Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak on this, this item?
I'm seeing none.
Okay, thanks. We'll close public comment period and bring it back to the council for discussion. Is there anyone who'd like to start us off tonight?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead, Vice Mayor Fredericks, please.
Sure, I'll jump in. I, I think as the council, we've had previous discussions about attending to some of the concerns of, of the merchants. I still think we need to do that. We need to develop a policy. But I really am impressed about of how carefully this was planned within the constraints to address some of the concerns of the merchants and I'm prepared to support it.
Great. Thank you. Greg, Councilmember Thera.
I just wanted to thank Nushen for her work. This looks like it's going to be a fantastic event. And I agree with my colleague, Vice Mayor Fredericks, that, you know, the council as a whole has to address when we close Main Street, when we don't. And I thought the letter from our Chamber of Commerce had Deanna Biss was very hopeful. And that maybe this is something we need to get on the agenda, but I, I really want to thank Nushen. This looks fantastic and I'm very excited. So thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Yeah, sounds great. Go ahead, Councilmember Warner.
Yeah, I'd also like to, to thank you, Nushen, and to congratulate you. This is amazing. You sort of showed up one day and said you had a vision for doing this and then unfailingly headed towards it and now it's going to be reality. So I'm, I'm very excited, eager to go. And I also love the growing reputation that Tiburon is developing of being a, a source of diverse and interesting celebrations. I just, I can't wait. I think it's going to be great. So thank you. I did have a question and maybe this was addressed earlier, but have you actually had an opportunity to speak with the folks at Water's Edge about the music?
I actually have not spoken with them directly and I'm happy to do that. I've been mainly working with Deanna and just figuring out how to be sensitive, but I, I'm happy.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's been a repeated issue for them and I just want to make sure that they're communicated with. And to the extent that it's quieter music and they're okay with it, that's great. If, if there are adjustments that need to be made, I just think it would, it would mean a lot if you could reach out and talk to them.
I will do that. Thank you. I'm making a note right now to reach out.
Yeah, and I do think that you've covered it by stick, by going with acoustic music, but I, but I agree with the Councilman Warner. That's a great point. Is there anyone in the council who'd like to make a motion that we approve this?
I'd move it.
Okay, any second. We, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Thera.
Yes.
Councilmember Warner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes. Thank you. It passes four zero.
Great. Thank you all so much. I'm looking forward to the final stretch.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you again. Take care.
So now we move on to action item three, which is considering an appointment of a chair and vice chair of the Diversity Inclusion Task Force. Do we have a staff report on this one?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, the council is being asked to consider making an appointment to the chair and vice chair of the Diversity Inclusion Task Force. This is an annual item. The council has asked us to agendize this on a regular basis on the second regular meeting in February. Just to consider a chair and a vice chair for the coming year. The sort of unofficial term is March first through February twenty eighth of each year. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, is there any questions for staff on this? Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this agenda item?
Seeing none.
Okay, I'll close public comment period and bring it to the council for discussion. Where do we start on this one?
So.
Yeah, please go ahead, Vice Mayor Fredericks.
So we will be appointing another council member in the future. Is there any blowback from deferring this appointment until we do that? I guess that's Ben Stoff question.
Oh, in other words, you're asking, do we need to do this now or can we wait? Right?
Yeah, that's the short and sweet of it.
Yeah, the resolution says on an annual basis. So, you know, I think it's envisioned to be done on an annual basis and we are at that, at that mark. But I will say there's, you know, it's at the council's pleasure if you need more information or you want to wait for another council member to be seated. I think if we did that, you would just have to make a note of whoever then gets appointed. You would, they'd have a shorter term based on direction from the previous, previously by the council that you want to have this heard every February. So we'd have a, you know, whenever that person's appointed or persons, it would be March and then council member Thera will continue serving until that appointment's made.
So, so in other words, So, so in other words, we can appoint someone for a shorter term. We just can't drag out the present term.
Uh, no, I mean, you can, Councilmember Thier will continue until you appoint.
Okay.
So if that means drag out, sorry, Councilmember Thier, that's not the.
I don't think that's what.
Drag out your term?
She meant.
I mean, drag out the deadline for the reappointment.
Thank you.
Especially for the vice chair, right? Like then we're dragging out, no, you know, no appointment at this point, right? Technically, we could reappoint.
Well, I guess, I mean, the real question is, do we know? I mean, who, who would like to be the chair next year? We can just ask the question and figure it out. I mean, there's no reason to.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, is there anybody who wants to?
That's, that's the question.
Yes, agreed.
I, I'd like to continue chairing.
Okay, and then.
And is there anyone else who wants to?
Anyone else? Yeah. Okay, and then is there anyone who wants to be a vice chair? Okay, so it looks like that one, we might want to wait until a subsequent meeting.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, in this case, um, do we need to vote? Or is it just, oh, what's, how do you want us to actually make a reappointment of the chair?
You need to, you need to vote. Someone needs to move in second and then take a vote.
Okay, so I'll move to nominate Holly to be chair for the coming year.
Okay, do I have a second? I'll second that. Can I second? Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Thier.
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Yes.
Mayor Ryan.
Yes. Um, and then so, and then, sorry, one last question for you, Ben. Do we need to do anything formal in terms of delaying the subsequent?
No, no action just means it'll be, it'll come back. Direction of staff will be to agendize this once we have a fifth council member.
Thank you. Okay, great. Appreciate that. Okay, thank you. That takes us to the end of the action items. We had a public hearing scheduled, but it is continued until March fifteenth. Um, do we have any town council member reports this evening?
I have two short ones.
Oh, yeah, Vice Mayor Fredericks, please.
Yeah, sure. One is just to note that the Cal Cities Board of Directors has directed Cal Cities, this is the former League of California Cities, same organization, different name. They've directed them to investigate the feasibility of a ballot measure in 2024 that pushes back against the state's efforts to undermine local land use control. So it'll be an ongoing study in the next year. And then I have a request for an agenda also from the league, from the Cal Cities. They asked the individual cities in the state for a resolution opposing an initiative that is just qualified for the state ballot in 2024 that is an anti-local control measure. According to the league, according to Cal Cities, if it passes, the initiative limits voters' authority to raise taxes and fees for government services and is retroactive. And there are other objections to it. If we agree to agendize it, we can educate ourselves on it. And that's the end of my reports. Yes.
But is that something that we would agendize directly to council or would it go to the legislative advisory subcommittee first?
Uh, we could do it that way, yes.
Do you, I mean, is there a time, a timing, a sequence that we need to?
I think, I think the league would like us to pass those resolutions as soon as possible.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Whatever works.
Great, thank you. Um, do we have any other council member reports? No, okay, how about, do we have a town manager report this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now we could, we'll move into closed session. We have two items to consider. And before we all leave to do that, I believe I have to take public comment on the closed session. Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on our closed session items?
Seeing one. Thier.
Okay.
I am just double checking. You're going to be coming back out of closed session to report?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Uh, do you see anybody else, Lee?
Seeing none.
Thanks. Okay, I will close the public comment period. And then we will all head off to leave this meeting and head into closed session. And we'll be back when we've resolved the two items for at the end of this. Okay, thank you, everybody. See you soon.
Thank you.